Welcome to the April 30th, 2012 meeting, special meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Menucha.
Here.
Najarian.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. Mr. Najarian will be joining us in a few minutes. May we have your report?
The agenda for the April 30th, 2012 special meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, April 26, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. On the agenda today is Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding Budget Study Sessions for Fiscal Year 2012 to 2013, year-end financial projections, organizational profile, and budget targets.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. I may please the council, we have before you the first of two budget study sessions in this first round of study sessions, and then we will come back to you in the middle of May with follow-up from some of the direction given today by council. What we have for you today in this first half of this round is a look at several factors. To know where you're going, we have to know where you are, and so we want to be able to paint for the council an illustration of the existing fiscal year, a discussion about the gap that we face for the coming fiscal year, and by the end of this study session, not necessarily today, but by the end of tomorrow, have concurrence from the council about what that gap is and in terms of what we want to try and tackle in the coming fiscal year. We also want to get an idea about council priorities, that which can be and must be preserved, and at the same time, understand for the council what the tools that you would allow us to use, because what you'll see in this first round of study sessions is a lot of information, and not a whole lot of forward progress in terms of fixing the problem, because again, we want to understand and ensure that we all are focused on the same things. And so, what Mr. Elliott will be doing for you by way of introduction is the budget reduction recap in terms of how we got to this current fiscal year, talk about where we're going to be by the end of this year, we believe. I will give you a snapshot, a profile of where the organization sits today. We'll talk about that gap that has been reported out as over $15 million and how we got to that point in time, or how we got to this point, and then take a look at council priorities and then try to answer council questions as best we can, knowing that if we don't have the answer, we will have to acknowledge that and come back to you either tomorrow or in the coming weeks. So, with that being said, I will turn it over to Mr. Elliott, and he will start off our presentation. Bob?
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's my privilege to present to you our first study session. As Scott mentioned, we want to focus on where we are currently in 1112, so let me dive right into that. Get the PowerPoint to work. Just by way of background, you can see some of the percentage, overall percentage reductions we've had in the general fund the last four years leading up to 1213. As you recall, this year in 1112, we had a budget gap of about $18 million that we closed with a variety of revenue strategies, excuse me, and some expenditure reductions. Primarily in the revenue area, we increased the loan from the GRA, we increased the transfer from the electric fund, and raised a number of city fees with the citywide fee study. On the expenditure side, we had program reductions of about $4.8 million and other estimated savings, about $6.4 million.
And so I think what you can take away from this is that Glendale has done the good work up until this point to make the reductions, that first, the low-hanging fruit, and then as time went on, as the recession dragged on and went longer, and when the depth of the recession went even further, it's become more and more difficult to make these kinds of cuts to this point.
As you recall, we had a balanced budget moving into this year. We had fairly conservative revenue estimates, and we'll go through those a little bit in a few minutes. We have had some, even with conservative estimates, some reductions in those estimates as we've moved forward. We've reduced personnel count, vacancies, we've reduced capital to virtually nothing. M&amp;O is all but disappeared, except for the essential items. We've had the hiring freeze for all non-essential positions maintained. We've dealt with what we're calling the organizational infrastructure, those, if you recall, the internal service fund shortages or deficits that we have been, put a program in place for now six years, trying to get those funds out of a deficit. If you recall, the workers' compensation being the primary one is $19 million deficit. We're now trying to get that squared away, along with the other funds that are in the deficit, within the next five years. So how are we doing through the third quarter of this year? Our revenues are 64.6 percent, and we'll show, go through the categories in a minute. That's exactly where we were as a percentage-wise from last year, bearing in mind, we also discontinued the water transfer this year, and this does however include the redevelopment loan repayment of $6 million, and we'll get into that in detail in a few minutes. Expenditures as a percent were up versus last year, but still below what we would say is straight line. We're through nine months, you would expect to be 75 percent if it was straight line, so we are doing better than straight line and still on target. In terms of revenues, some revenues, the good news is our sales taxes is up a little bit, and that's good news, and consumer goods and auto sales have picked up a tick. Some of our occupancy taxes up, which is a sign of recovery to an extent. Some of our licenses and permits have increased, and some of our miscellaneous revenues has gone up. That said, the not-so-good news is a number of our categories have been revised downward, utility users tax being the primary one, and that's based off electric and water sales, and that has gone, as have electric and water sales dipped, so has this tax. Less tonnage going in the landfill, so the landfill assessment has been revised downward. Some of our other charges for services have not materialized, so we've revised that downwards. And one, the last item noted there, the motor vehicle on lieu, the state just suspended that, so we're no longer getting that $475,000 a year. Yet another state takeaway that we're having to deal with.
Wasn't that an initiative that was voted on by the voters of California, the 1A? Wasn't that part of it, that they couldn't take it back?
Sure, I don't recall. I don't believe this one is covered by 1A.
It's not?
Because I think it would have triggered the lawsuit from the league, but we will confirm that for you.
So as a result, the net result of all this is we have revised our revenues for 1112 down 2.23 million. You know, as a note on that, our property tax revenue is still a little flat. It's a good, solid revenue source, but as you recall, we only get 13 cents of every property tax dollar, so it's, while it is stable, it's not a tremendous growth.
Not very dynamic, even as we build more and develop more.
Right. Sales tax is good, it's a lot more fickle in terms of being susceptible to economic ups and downs. We tend to have a lot of eggs in one basket with the car sales, and in good times, that's good, and bad times, it really suffers, because that's one of the first things that goes down. So, as I said, we're seeing a good uptick in auto sales, so I mean, that's the good news on sales tax. The bad news is, again, unlike property tax, it goes up, it's a lot more volatile than property tax. So, to recap our resources by the different categories, you can see where we're at, nothing to be alarmed about. I will point out, however, in the middle of, as you see, intergovernmental, it's $6 million, that's the GRA loan repayment. We have moved that, we have booked it into the general fund this year, and I'll talk about the consequences if that gets reversed.
Which item?
About halfway down, intergovernmental. This is $6 million.
That's the GRA?
That's the GRA loan repayment. Some other items to note, the inter-fund revenue, that's the cost allocation, that's the money that the other funds pay back to the general fund for central support department, notably the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, attorney's office, my office, that's the revenue coming back in from all the departments paying for that. Transfers from other funds, that's a large source, obviously $21 million of that is the GWP transfer. There's still a $1 million transfer from the refuse fund and a $1.9 million transfer from the parking fund. So with that, we're about 65 percent, which is where we would expect to be in terms of revenues, even with some of our reductions. On expenditures, as I noted earlier, we are at 72.1 percent cumulative. All the departments are doing very well and holding the line in terms of expenditures. I mean, like, again, if it was straight lined, it would be 75 percent, so all the departments are doing their best to do what they can to save on expenses. Nine months of the year, 75 percent would be a straight line, so if ever...
And you're...
That's what, we're at 72 percent right now. 72.1.
My copy has a different number. My copy has a different number, that's what I was asking.
Are you on the expenditures or revenues? The revenues were at 65.
Okay. Why would the revenues be at 65 and...
It's just a matter of timing and when they come in, we don't, revenues tend to be a little backloaded when we get our late payments for sales tax and property tax later on in the year, so we end up catching up.
Versus on the expenditures, if we have a contract that's already been budgeted, but it's coming sooner, you're going to see that snake eating the deer right there.
Yeah, there really is no correlation, the expenditures are completely different from the revenues.
But in terms of matching, don't you have to match the, don't you have to accrue the revenues?
Oh yeah, we do, yeah.
Wouldn't it be 75 percent as well, if you accrue it?
Well, we don't do the accruals during the year, per se, unless it's a very significant amount, so we don't do that until the end of the year under modified accrual.
That's fine.
So where does that leave us for the year? We started the year with a balanced budget of $170 million with our revised revenues. We were forecasting resources down to $167 million. It gives us a revenue resource gap of 3.2 million. Our best guess right now that we'll finish on the expenditure side of $167 million, leaving about a $3 million estimated savings on the expenditures, and that would give us about a $230,000 net deficit for the year. That's assuming no redevelopment impact at this point.
And I think it's worth reflecting on that, that the good work that was done at this time last year to set in place a budget and all the work that's being done by the departments indicates that on $170 million, $170 million general fund, you're out of balance $230,000, less than a quarter of a million dollars, without the impact of the state. That's something the council should be commended for, as should the staff.
So what...
So you're saying we're not going to have a $7 million surplus this year, right?
I'll ask...
No, far from it.
One of the things that you shot's a good question. One of the things that we are trying to do as we understand what the new normal is, what the new base here is, as much as we hoped and prayed that 1112 would be the new base here, it's not. We're hopeful that 1213 will be, that our feet will finally be touching the bottom of the pool, and with that in mind, the idea is to call things by their right names. And so we have this year gone through and eliminated most all of the unfilled positions. If a department had it vacant for some time, gone.
So where does that leave us for the end of the year? As we discuss with the small deficit of $230,000, if you look at our charter and unassigned reserve, we're at $84 million. As you recall, last year, we had the large redevelopment repayment of about $30 million. That bumped our fund balance up to about $84 million, or I think at the end of the year was 50 percent. With the, taking away the $230,000 deficit for this year, it would drop us down to 49.8. That's assuming no redevelopment impact.
Sorry, could you repeat that again, please? I missed it.
Sure. The, we'll go back on this. We started the year on the fund balance at $84 million, that's the charter and unassigned...
The reserve.
Fund balance reserve, correct. If you take away the $230,000 projected operating loss for this year, it would just leave us still at $84,280,000, roughly about 49 percent. We started the year at 50 percent, this would drop us down to 49.8, pre-redevelopment impact. So what happens with the redevelopment impact? A lot of it's still up in the air, but more likely than not, the loan payment, and I would defer to Mr. Garcia on where we're at from a legal standpoint, but from everything we've seen thus far, this is likely going to get returned to the successor agency slash the state.
$6 million?
$6 million, and all the transfers we made in the past, and I'll walk you through that.
And $6 million a year, ongoing forever.
So, in...
The $6 million that was in the revenues that you just showed, that's going to be taken away?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying? That could be taken away?
Correct. More than likely will be.
Which would give us a deficit of $6,230,000.
And then some.
And the impact adds up.
For the current year?
Correct, and I'm going to walk you through all the impacts. So, on top of the $6 million, there's also loss and cost allocation recovery from the redevelopment agency. They paid a large part of the central support bills. In addition, there's staffing costs from the agency of about $1.9 million that will likely be absorbed by the general fund come June. In addition, and we talked about this at the mid-year update, we would have to write off the transfer that was made, pay back all the cash, and write off the remaining balance of the loan. All told would be about another $79 million hit to fund balance, and I'll show you exactly how that plays out. So, kind of the same slide we did before, but this time with the redevelopment impacts in it, and it shows you our resources and expenditures. Here's the $230,000 operating deficit. We take away the loan repayment out of the resources, that raises the deficit by $6 million, the cost allocation revenue, and then add back the staffing costs, and now we'll be at an $8.6 million deficit for the year. More than likely it will happen, still unknown at this point, but everything we keep seeing would lead me to believe that we'll end up returning that to the successor agency.
The last bonds that were issued by the redevelopment agency, that's going to be reversed as well, in your opinion?
I think that's still up in the air, that there's a lot of discussion that the bonds still need to be spent for the purposes they were led for, but, you know, I don't know at this point.
We're trying to cultivate a more aggressive legal strategy, I'll defer to Mr. Garcia, to the extent that bonds that exist are under 26 to be used for their intended purposes. So we are hopeful, and the Department of Finance seems to be, State Department of Finance seems to be playing both sides on this particular question. That would change our picture for the projects outstanding dramatically, but at this point, no one really knows for sure. We're starting, successor agencies are starting to send their ROPS, ROPS, up to the state, and having what is either delay tactics or kind of a line item veto on the different items that they are allowing versus not allowing, and as you might suspect, things that they're not allowing are things that are most beneficial to the cities, vis-à-vis resources, bond payments, things like that.
And those funds are still there, they have not been spent?
Those funds are still there.
Still in the bank?
They're still there in the bank, and such as it is, and one scenario would be that we would be required, if it's applicable, to deface the bonds, give it all back and then not do any projects. So we're waiting really for that moment of clarity to come.
I just think it's going to be an interesting question legally. If you've issued essentially your tax-free municipal bonds, those buyers and holders of those bonds relied on...
Yeah, absolutely.
What do you do with that?
And there's a lot of discussion about, at the federal level, violation of tax laws doing just that, so...
We're using that as a basis for, like, as I say, a more aggressive legal strategy, to say, at least on those funds, that we'd be able to move forward. Now, on the general tax increment funds, our worst fear is that that simply will be swept, and the state will take that money.
Well, that's what's expected, actually.
Yes, absolutely.
Not only the loan repayment, but the actual tax, the pot of tax revenue that we were sitting on.
But the $6 million that you have, I was under the impression that the loan repayments to the city would be maintained and not be taken away, because it's an obligation that needs to be paid.
We believe it to be, and will argue such, the state probably will not.
Yeah, if I may, Councilmember Menucha, the legislation was written in such a way to negate those obligations and take those monies, and that's one of the issues that would be at play if there was any litigation, but there's that issue, and that's one of the issues that some in the state legislature are trying to address with the new legislation, but we just don't know where that's going to go. But the legislation was written in such a way to impair those particular contracts.
Do we have obligations that we have to pay based on those bonds, based on those loans that were made by the city to the redevelopment agency? Is there anywhere else we have to pay as a city?
Now, most of those, most of those were for loans made in prior years that we, the city did certain public improvements, and the agency loaned the money to do those works.
So those monies were loaned out of our own reserves account, reserve accounts basically, to the redevelopment agency?
And then interest accrued through the years to get to that $71 million as of last year.
Just, the thought is that if they take that away, it will not, it's not just taking, to me, it's taking away the revenue, but it's not generating additional expenditures for us somewhere else. That is the question.
That's correct, and we would then have to adjust our expenditures down.
Right.
Right.
Okay, again, so where that leaves us would be an $8.6 million deficit for the year. What does it do to our overall fund balance? As I showed you a couple slides ago, we, absent the redevelopment impact, we'd be at about 49.8 percent, which is rather high. If you recall, our adopted fund balance percent is 35 percent with a floor of 30, and we jumped way up last year because of the assets that we paid back to the general fund. What this shows you is the impact on the total fund balance and kind of what I just showed you a little bit, but here's the reduction from this year, here's the cash that we would ultimately pay back, here's all the land and receivables that we would return, the 8.4 million, and the remaining loan to be paid is $40 million. We would take all those items away from our fund balance, thus reducing it down to about 26 percent. So we would go from $133 million total fund balance down to $45 million in the general fund.
And the difference between the 84 and 133 is the loan payback, though?
It's the loss of the loan payment for this year.
No, no. Why, the total fund balance and the unassigned charter reserve?
Oh, there's a couple other items in there, like for inventory and some other items, that the difference between the unassigned charter and the total inventory, and that's the difference between the 45.28 and the 45.869. But the $40,480,000, that's the amount to be paid, that was the balance of the remaining loan, and then what we did pay, and then the 8.4 million, which is the land and receivables, all those would be wiped off and sent over to the successor agency. Just wanted to highlight what this would do from a cash perspective and show where we are on a cash, total cash basis as of March. Citywide, we're at $462 million with no impact factored in with the redevelopment issues. If we factor in worst-case scenario for the redevelopment takeaways, the general fund cash obviously goes down by the amount of the $30 million that we would end up repaying back to the successor agency. All the redevelopment cash, which we're still showing here, as if it still existed, goes to zero because it's no longer city funds anymore. Obviously, the other thing to note is still the negative cash in the water fund, but we talked about that quite a bit. So overall, our total cash drops a significant amount from $462 million to $375 million.
$90 million, about?
Big dollars, 88, I think, is the total, yeah. Big dollars. So again, just to show it another way, where we get this year using our revenues and then the operating loss and the impact of the redevelopment, we would still end the year 8.6 million deficit, worst-case scenario, with the impact of the redevelopment agency.
And so the surplus, such as it was from the previous year, basically is offsetting the operating loss this year because of the loss generally of redevelopment. So we're, it was swimming and paddling harder and faster, but not getting anyone. That's basically how we expect to close out the year. We are conservative in all of these estimates, we have confidence that they're accurate, but they are still just projections.
Are there any questions? Okay, we'll move on.
The next step in this discussion, I think, is also to take a look at where the organization is, and certainly from my perspective, being new to the organization, trying to understand different aspects ratios, really a clear understanding of how we do things and why. And so what I'll try to convey in this next segment, and then ongoing really, is an overview of what Glendale is today, and hopefully give an idea about where it is that we need to move in the future. As you look at the total population of... Can I help me out there, Bob?
Oh, sorry.
Total population, 2010 census, 190, almost 192,000, total city employees budgeted, and then beneath that, you see in the 997, the employees budgeted in the general fund. We hold up a revised budget and a general fund revised budget, and you see those numbers. So I think it's interesting to be able to point out to you where we are per capita on both the overall city budget as well as the general fund budget, and some of these, you'll see some of these ratios and relationships kind of be woven into the subsequent slides. In terms of budget per capita, you see the numbers there. The per capita dollars are interesting, the relationships you see, because our budget is going down, but so too has the population based on the 2010 census. But it gives you an idea of the order of magnitude, what we spend in terms of providing services, and also just by way of general comment, for everyone's edification, the total revised budget and the total budget per capita is a reflection of everything up to and including the utility, Glendale Water and Power, they are not included in that general fund budget, and that really impacts, you're going from an $859 million budget to $171 million. Next, I want to be able to show you, we talk a lot about debt, we talk a lot about what the city's ability to carry debt is. As of the last, as the close of our last fiscal year, we are carrying about $518 million in debt. You can see how it's distributed there, primarily tax allocation bonds and revenue bonds that emanate from the redevelopment agency and from the utility, but also the COPs, the certificates of participation, are a reflection of the new police facility, and you see some of the other smaller, but still significant areas of debt that we do carry. Up next is the liquidity ratios, because the first slide doesn't mean anything without some kind of context. What this slide shows you is our total assets and our total liabilities and inventories, and the idea here is our ability to exist, to pay, how many times over, we are able to pay our liabilities with our existing assets, and so, and the quick ratio versus the current ratio is simply a more conservative estimate of that number, of the current ratio. What's important to note here is that Glendale does considerably better than the comparison city average. If the other cities are able to pay 4.8 times, we're at 6.7. You know, the city, long-term, is healthy. We do have the ability to pay our obligations going forward.
Who are some of the comp?
I believe we look at the larger cities in Los Angeles counties, so especially here in the larger Los Angeles metropolitan area as opposed to South Bay or Valleys, but we are looking, or rather, the east end of the county. So your Torrance, your Beverly Hills, your Pasadena, Burbank, those cities that, you know, that we have something in comparison with, we wouldn't use tiny Sierra Madre, for example. Want to make sure that we're going apples to apples. In terms of debt ratios, same kinds of relationships, and also a good indication of the long-term viability and health of the city of Glendale. You see here that the debt ratio is 26 percent versus what it is for other cities, and what this tells you here, that 34, the debt to equity, 34 percent for Glendale, 74 percent for other comp cities, is that we have historically done more equity... other comp cities, is that we have historically done more equity, purchase of asset, as opposed to debt financing. Not that there's anything necessarily wrong with debt financing under certain circumstances where it's done responsibly and reasonably on conservative projections. But the idea here is that Glendale historically has been fiscally conservative and prudent and served the city well. But we do have some issues to address. When Bob showed you our revenue sheet, we derive revenue, really, the main chunks of revenue, especially from the general fund, because the overall city budget is, a big chunk of that is GWP, which are user charges and fees that go back over to customers. But the lifeblood of the city is its general fund. We need to be more diverse in our general fund, and we need to be more competitive, particularly as it pertains to sales tax. We can't really do a lot here with respect to property tax. We collect 13 cents on the dollar. That's significantly less than either Pasadena or Burbank, our neighboring cities. But that being said, we do have some control over what happens with sales tax revenue. Now, when you think about sales tax in Glendale, you think, oh, this is an affluent community. It's a community that has a great deal of resource. And when you think of it, you think Brand Boulevard of Cars, you think the Glendale Galleria, you think the Americana. But I would challenge you to think beyond that in terms of large sales tax generators. You've got the Home Depot out on the west side, but you're not seeing a whole lot there. Now, luckily, we are a large employer base. Folks that come and work here, they eat here, they shop here, as well as the people that live here are able to supply us with some sales tax revenue from the shopping that they do. But I think the tail of the tape is important. Yes, we are larger than Burbank or Pasadena, but again, on a per capita basis, we're pulling in $151 per capita for sales tax versus Burbank, which is about a little less than half, or a little more than half our size, $209,000. And Pasadena, $200, or $209 per resident, and $228 for Pasadena. That, to me, is the, probably the most practical and the best area for us to make investments in terms of shoring up our economic development efforts. Again, sales tax, or property tax, rather, is very, very stable, but it's hard to grow in the short term. The sales tax, while more volatile, we get the return on investment much more quickly. Then also, you have to look at utility user tax revenue. It is important to note that we are, this is really just based on volume and so, and on pricing and the percentage of the UUT, we are significantly less than either of our neighbors. We are a little more competitive on permits and licenses, but certainly not nearly approaching where Pasadena is. And I would submit to you that we probably don't want to be that high. The more expensive it is to do business, ultimately, there is a diminishing return if we are careless in looking at that. But again, important to see that we have considerable work to do in the arena of economic development.
It would be interesting to measure the hotel room tax way.
We will break that up. That's easy enough to do. We'll break that out on a separate slide for you, because that is one of the discussions that you'll see tomorrow as we talk about revenue, where the market is, where we are, and the impact that we think it may have on occupancy rates. So when we talk about, okay, we're raising these dollars, where do these dollars go? And so as kind of a quick dashboard for the city council and community, you know, how do we spend all of this money? Public safety, basically, police and fire are going to pull in on the overall city budget. About 17% of our expenditures are there. When you look at public works, GWP, and our transit services, that is by far the largest chunk. And then community development is large, particularly because of the Section 8 housing program that we administer, as well as our CDBG programming that we do. But I think that the point here is that you see those three large chunks are where we spend the large bulk of our money. But I know, in the short time that I've been here and certainly listening to the city council, quality of life is something that has been cut in the past, but that it's difficult to foresee us cutting too much more, if at all, because it helps define what Glendale is. We do need more parks, we do need more open spaces, we do need programming for our residents. But you see those quality-of-life soft services, your library, your parks and recreation, social services. That is, that certainly is the tail and not the dog. By the same token, you look at administration, we're actually fairly trimmed there. That includes city manager's office, management services, HR, finance, and ISD. And so that tooth-to-tail ratio is probably what it needs to be, as long as we're protecting those quality-of-life soft services. Risk management is something that we have to pay close attention to, and I will tell you that it's been quite an education for me coming into this organization, that historically, Glendale, being an affluent community, really didn't have to spend too much time or effort wondering about the cost of doing business, because resources had been there historically. Over the last several years, you've done very, very well to try to get a handle on what those costs of doing business truly are, because this is an ongoing business concern. It's the business of local government. And so some of the things that get lost in the mix are the things that we're trying to address in this coming year's budget, those organizational infrastructure items. What we want to show you here is when we look at risk management and control for workers' compensation. 2010 claims, 100, or 285 claims, 15% of our employees are actually utilizing the workers' comp system. 2011, however, you see that that number drops, and that's a step in the right direction. Ideally, we want to get this to hover around 10% or use 10% as a good rule of thumb to stay beneath. Practically speaking, you have a full-service employee, a police department, fire department, public works departments, people are going to invariably get hurt, and it's a cost of doing business. But we can be more precise, more careful. But I will, and you'll see later on, as we talk about M&amp;O budgets, where we have cut historically and we continue to cut is on things like training, on things like making sure that we have, if we're going to maintain a service level, we have the staffing to provide that level of service. All open claims, 754. The idea there is to show you that we are, we do have, we've been relatively efficient over the previous years. We're carrying forward, you know, a little over, a little less than 250 claims going onward. Want to talk about department utilization. As I said, there was 13% in the last calendar year, and I'm looking forward to see where we are for this coming, this current year. But you'll see that oddly enough, you know, not too oddly enough, police is one of the higher numbers, followed by the fire department, and then GWP and public works. Parks and, or community services and parks is relatively high, and that's probably a function of the maintenance responsibilities that they have, people out in the field. You can see in 11, they didn't do as well. We actually ticked up there, but fire did go down. GWP pretty much held constant. Police went down in a very significant way, and I think that has a lot to do with the overall management of the department, the changing focus of the strategies that we use. And public works has held pretty constant. In terms of average amounts for each claim paid, you can see that it's $4,500. The difference between the amount paid and the amount incurred is the reserve that we set aside for what we think a claim might be worth over, when we first do the analysis of what the claim truly is. And so the spread between there is kind of the $60,000 question. You know, how quickly can we get people out of the workers' comp system, back into the line of duty, as opposed to having them continually serially come back and re-aggravate the same injuries? When we look at general liability on the next slide, that's something, again, that we have to pay close attention to, and it has been a spot, a source of frustration for the city. But I think, again, the tail of the tape is important to take a look at, because while we're not maybe where we should be, we are doing relatively, we're doing a relatively good job, but we can do a lot better, and you'll see on the next slide as well. But total claims, we are ticked up from the previous couple of years, but as you'll see going forward, 353 is kind of, 353 claims per year is kind of our average over the last period of time. And you can see primarily where the claims come. No surprise, GWP, police, and public works. Our goal is going to be to really focus on those trip and falls to the best we can, but again, it's a function of service level.
Public works and police are easy to identify, but GWP?
The equipment in an unsafe condition, somebody claiming it's either a service issue, you shouldn't have turned off my power, or the pole wasn't maintained well enough, I tripped, things like that. It's still primarily those types of service-driven complaints. On the next slide, it's a little more indicative of what our experience is. Again, looking back over the last nine years from January, or, I'm sorry, July of 2003, that's a significant amount of liability payments. But I think, again, the tail of the tape is in the lower half of the slide, where you see that we have had a very, very small number of very large settlements that are taking up the big chunk of that $48.8 million. The number of claims, as I say, has been fairly constant, around 353, so our goal is going to be to drive that number down. But again, it's going to be realistic. It's going to depend on staffing levels to make sure that as we come across hazards in the community, we can abate those hazards, so we don't end up with that $150,000 claim for a trip and fall. But if you look at the average cost per claim being 15, that should be a dollar sign in front of that, I'm sorry, the 15, 376, the overwhelming number of our claims are indeed small claims. 98.67% of the claims are less than 100,000. Three one-hundredths of a percent are over $6 million. But we have had those very large types of claims that we've paid out. We are currently, as you know, trying to recoup some of that on one particular claim, but it doesn't abate the fact that we have some work to do when it comes to general liability and shoring up not only this fund balance, but also this overall effort in abating hazards within the community. I want to share with you now a discussion in terms of what we look like in terms of staffing. Now, because of our water and power utility, it's very difficult to break out, when we take out capital. And one of the drills that we run here is to remove capital from the equation, because capital does vary significantly, as sometimes we also back out, at least in this exercise, transfers. But it's difficult, and we say, okay, we're just looking at personnel and M&amp;O, because M&amp;O for GWP is literally tens of millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars, with buying and selling of electricity and water. And so I want to show you two slides here. This slide here tells you, over the last three years, what has gone, what has happened with total city salaries, these are in millions of dollars, total city salaries and benefits. And again, we are a service organization. Our primary cost is our people, especially in general fund and in those non-utility operations. But you'll see in 2010, we spent $232 million on salaries and benefits, and the total annual appropriation, including GWP, $763 million. So of that M&amp;O number, or personnel and M&amp;O, you know, 30% is, 30.5% is personnel. And so you'll look, the good news here for Glendale is that that number remains relatively constant as you move across the bottom. And even as you look at the variance on the far right-hand column, while salaries and benefits are increasing, so too is the city's annual appropriation. The city is growing in responsible ways in this particular context. But we try to slice and dice the information to try to truly understand what is going on. So on the next slide, what you'll see is using the general fund as comparison. So again, we remove the GWP in particular, buying and selling of electricity, to try to find out general services, again, police, fire, some of public works, very small amount of public works, nice chunk of CSP, all of the library, most of management services, big chunk of finance and HR. This is where we deliver the largest bulk of our services. So again, you see 126 million in 10, 136.4 in 11, 141 in 12. And then you look across from left to right in terms of what the annual appropriations are for the general fund, and you can see that what I think is happening here in tandem with the previous slide is that, yes, we're holding, we're doing well to hold salaries and benefits stable, but over these last three years, you've done more to quantify the true cost of doing business by putting more obligations into the general fund. And so you're seeing those numbers tick up. And at the same time, you're having to cut M&amp;O and cut capital. So you see a rather, what I would characterize as less-than-optimal ratio along the bottom, where in the year 2012, 82.2% of our general fund appropriations are going for personnel. In my experience, my recommendation would be that that number needs to be somewhere in the mid-70s, closer to 70% than 75. That is not the case, because we've been trying to do the same level of service over the last couple of years, but for lots of different reasons, because we've needed to and because policy has been dictated that we shall provide similar levels of service, we've been keeping bodies and dropping M&amp;O.
Why are the salaries increasing if we're eliminating positions?
Well, if I may. There's a couple of things going on, I think, as you're putting more positions into the general fund that might have been in other departments. And so, for example, the paramedic program is a good example. We're moving those bodies, because that's part of the fire department's core mission in terms of calling things by their right names. Put it in the general fund, and let's figure a way to pay for it, as opposed to taking a position, allocating a portion of it here, here, here.
Well, I agree with that policy, actually. That's how it should be done.
If I may, some of the other, just.
But the problem is, we're not, we don't have, we're not comparing apples and apples here.
And it's very difficult.
I'm sorry, Bob, let me just finish that point. You're right, we aren't comparing apples and apples up until this point. Our goal in the coming fiscal year budget is to use 12, 13. That is the base year. That's where we're trying to settle all accounts and say, this is what it costs to run a full-service city serving 191,000 people. And it is what it is, and council gets to decide what we're going to fund and what we're not going to fund.
I think just as a reminder, some of the structural changes we've done in the past several budget years was, brought a lot of the individuals that were specifically budgeted in non-general fund departments, we brought them back into the general fund, so that's one of the reasons why salaries and benefits has gone up. Some of the other structural changes we did, we collapsed the police augmentation fund, so all those officers came back to the general fund, so that's reflected in there as well. And there's been some other items that we brought in back to the general fund.
Mr. Mayor, but this is a key component of our budget, and you've got to give us some indication. I mean, as we sit here as a council, we need to hear more than it's going up because we reallocated and we transferred positions in there. I mean, we need to know if it's our, I mean, if we feel that we have too much of our budget allocated to salaries and benefits, and it's our intention to ask you to go through the departments and cut even more, this really doesn't help us. It doesn't tell us if we've had success in doing that, and it's just been boosted up because of the transfer. And I know for the last two years, we've had this hiring freeze. This doesn't tell us if we were successful in lowering salaries and benefits, so we need to get into this a lot more closely, perhaps in future sessions, but.
Sure, and we will. I think this helps further illustrate the point that you make, sir. When you look along the bottom, when you look at all funds, we're seeing good continuity, 6%, 6.18% variance over those three budget years. So your efforts, as I've said at the outset, the efforts that the council has undertaken to reduce the cost per employee have been outstanding. Glendale is leading all other cities in Los Angeles that I'm aware of in terms of the partnership that you have with your employee groups. And so you've been very effective, and the organization is cost-effective. The issue is that we just have a lot of programming areas and we have a lot of people. So when you look along that 30.5, 30.3, 30.3, you see that consistency, and that speaks well of what it is that you've been trying to do. You go to the next slide, and you see, okay, if we're trying to call things by their right names, and we're going to budget strategically for long-term, then we need to get to a point where we are having a reasonable split between, a more reasonable split, between personnel and M&amp;O, particularly in the general fund, which is where a lot of the general government functions happen, the stuff that people out in the community come to understand and depend on.
And you threw out a mid-70% figure. Is there a, is there a number out there that's considered best practices for this sort of?
It's funny you ask. Yes and no. Among some managers that are focused on professional or performance measurement, if you can get to 70, that is, that's an idea. You get below 70, you're probably a contract city at that point. But if you want a full-service city and all that that entails with all the flexibility that in-house employees give, if you can get beneath 75, you're doing well. By the same token, I have to tell you on the next slide, here's where we need to, we need to spend some time and energy. When we look at the employees, the management versus non-management employees, we do spend a great deal of money on, particularly in management. This number needs to be closer, you see the bottom number, 28.8, 28.6, 29.5. That number needs to be closer to 25, and in fact, lower than 25, as a best management practice, in my humble opinion and experience. practice, in my humble opinion and experience. We do, and you'll see on the 2012 number, those are nine-month actuals, but the ratios and relationships still hold. Along the bottom, I wanted to make sure that we're clear. In terms of management, Glendale, because of the size of the organization, has an expanded definition of what management is. It's your executives, as well as your administrators, which would be the upper end of mid-management, your division manager would be the lower end of management, as well as your technical professionals and your supervisors. That's a lot of folks in management. And the reason, in my four and a half, or four months being here, the reason why I believe that's the case is because we have a lot of programming. Council and community have said, well, this is a program we want to pursue, and so we'll build, we're very good in local government about solving problems and building programs to find solutions. Evaluating those, and then identifying when we have mission drift and we have to pull the program back, we don't do as good a job. So one of the things you'll see in this coming budget is much more focus on that performance measurement. So understand, when we do drift, how do we yank the personnel costs back? Because over the coming budget year, my goal and recommendation to you is going to be to find a way to drop this number down beneath 25%. As I say, the cost of having employees is expensive. Our employees do an outstanding job. When you look at all of the safety ratings from police and fire, you look at satisfaction that is not even solicited, but is returned to us from our soft services in the library and community services, and you look just at the sheer amount of development and investment that's happening, obviously, people are satisfied with the service that they're getting. Still, it is expensive to have the number of employees that we have. What you see here is the, a summary of the benefit load for all of our different employees over the last three years.
What do you mean by a benefit load? You mean, you add this percentage to the salaries to get to the true cost of the employees?
The true cost of having...
In their respective areas?
Yes, sir. So, as you can see there, the biggest chunk of that is the retirement cost. I mean, it is what it is, that is the very large portion. Some of the other items are things that any employer, under employer costs, are going to incur, and then other items are negotiated over time. So for, just by way of example, in 2012...
61, 62% increase in benefit load for safety?
Not increase, that's existing.
That's the total load.
I know, I understand, but if someone's costing us $100,000, that means we're paying $162,000 for them?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
142 for non-safety, 42%.
That's correct.
Correct.
What's private industry numbers, when you look at...
I don't have that, it's difficult to come by. The Department of Labor statistics are oftentimes vague.
It's 0% to 10% probably.
I think it's going to be more than that, just on the employer rollups, and if they provide healthcare or a 401K, it's going to be, it's going to be something less than these amounts.
It's also going to vary by industry.
Absolutely. But I want to share with you on the next slide, however, is some context. Because if, as you saw on the previous slide, the largest chunk of money, or largest chunk of cost comes from retirement, but that's not anything new under this particular system. Again, Glendale, leading the way, has already negotiated and implemented a two-tier retirement system. What you see here, going back to 1976, is very high rates that should ring familiar to all of us over the last recession. Now, there's an interesting story to be told here. When you look at the early 80s, and still paying 36% is what the PERS rate was for safety, 20% in '86 for non-safety, you see that number start to go down. PERS, at that time, is beginning to make huge amounts of money, stock market and real estate, up until the point in 2001 where they just didn't charge cities for participation. If you recall, we were all told that the new economy knew no boundaries. Unfortunately, that obviously is not the case. While Glendale has remained very prudent by having employees always pay for their own portion of their retirement, as well as a portion of the employer's cost of retirement, which many cities still cannot do and lay claim to, you do, it still points out that there is cost. I think that the takeaway here is that going forward, you know, it's the fool-me-once, fool-me-twice type of scenario, that our cost, if we are going to have employees, and we're going to be participating in this system, and you are likely going to participate in this system in order to remain competitive, unless there is a statewide change in the system, then we need to be able to, even in the best of times, focus on a 22% and respectively 11%, 11.6% rate.
Are these costs only our costs, or do they don't include the employee's share, do they?
Correct. Is there the employer costs?
Employer rates.
And that's varied, so that takes into account it varying over the years?
Yeah, this is just historical...
So you see, yeah, the idea is that, you know, while the rates that we're paying today are high, they were high in 1981, and then they came back down. What perhaps not just Glendale, but every city should have done, is establish a fund for these kinds of costs, where we're straightlining the investment in the fund to keep it healthy over the long term. Yes, sir.
My memory isn't that good, but I'm trying to recall back in 2001, I think, roughly was only one year time. Cal PERS was telling us, super funded...
foreseeable future.
foreseeable future, three years out, no problems, whatever, go give whatever you want.
That lasted about two and a half years.
Right.
That lasted about six months, actually.
And then, late last year, I think it was, we had individual here, what was it, the auditor, whatever?
Oh, John Bartel, the actuary.
He said, "We should have been watching the stock market, not what Cal PERS told us."
Right. Correct.
Big lesson learned.
The good news for you is that with three of your four, four of your five bargaining groups, you've already secured a long-term two-tier system. That makes this much, much more sustainable. As you can see, it's, you've seen the ebbs and flows over the long term. That's to be commended. The, again, the takeaway here is that 22 and that 11.6, we need to be focused on the long-term setting monies away, again, what Bob and I have become determined, organizational infrastructure.
The point I was trying to get at, in 2001, we have been lambasted for years now because of what we did in 2001. But we had it on good authority. Rafi and I didn't do it in isolation, it was five, nothing vote, to listen to Cal PERS.
And the issue, that's a great point, because you have to appreciate the context that this was done in. When we are trying to compete for police officers, firefighters, for qualified technical professionals, engineers, planners, give it a name, well, if the other entities, agencies are offering a benefit, and the people providing the benefit, in this case, PERS, are telling you, it's not going to cost you anything else, it's awfully difficult, and one of your goals is to maintain a competitive compensation for qualified employees, it's hard to withstand it. Now, Glendale, again, has never paid the employee's share of the PERS. That took pretty serious fortitude on the part of the council not to ever give away that benefit, because there are many, many cities out there that did, readily.
So how is that second-tier shown in that 2013 number? Does that include the employees we think we might have, or it doesn't kick in because we're not hiring anyone new?
It's a blended rate. As we hire people into the system at the lower tier, whatever that is, the two at 55 or the three at 55, it will be blended into the rate.
That number is, that's a blended estimate.
At this point, at this point. And it's important to note, too, if you look back historically, you look on the non-safety side, that was, if I recall, that was probably the two at 60 plan. And changed probably in the mid-'90s to the two and a half, or to the two at 55 plan, which was a better plan. And then in '05, '06, changed to the two and a half at 55. You'd still see the relatively consistency. I mean, there are ups and downs with the formulas. Same thing with safety, that was likely the two at 50 plan, now at three at 50, and then now going to three at 55. You know, those were still fairly high amounts for quite a lot less of a benefit for the employees, so it kind of shows some of the relativity of the numbers. But PERS has done a pretty decent job coming back with their investments. I don't think they're where they want to be, but they've also implemented their smoothing plan and a lot of other things. One important thing that they've done recently is lower the expected rate of return on their investments. We have yet to see what that translates to, and our rate increases, I suspect those will tick up from what we know yet, or we haven't been notified yet, but I suspect those will go up a little bit as we move forward. But that's an important thing that they had to do.
A couple of items. Going back to 2001, I believe the council, all council members have their own expertise in their own areas, but we expect, as council members, I expect better advice from our managers, and our city manager, as well as our finance and the rest of the team. Second, I disagree with you in terms of looking at our 37-year average. I can't look at that, that's not what I'm looking at. I'm looking at the last number, or last two numbers, which is what is going to cost me to move forward from here, and not the 22.14 and the 11.63%. To me, it's 30%, that's what we're looking at. I understand historically, the numbers have been all over, but the reality is that for this year, and next year, and probably the foreseeable future, we're looking at 30%.
Certainly, absolutely. My point is only that if Newtonian physics apply here, that that which went up is going to come down again, that as a matter, as a principle of maintaining employees, we should not vary from that 37-year average on a rolling basis.
Right. Maybe our goal, maybe our overall goal in terms of the retirement benefits should be 22%, but we're looking at a 30% and then 15%. And we are, we should also not stray too far from the prior slide, which shows the total benefit load to the employees. So we need to keep the overall impact in mind as we're dealing with this overall budget issue.
Yes, sir. I want to take you now through the discussion of our budget gap. There's been a good discussion about it, we've talked about it, it's kind of the shark and jaws, we're waiting for the third reel for it to emerge on screen, so let's just put it up there. Because there is a lot of continuity in terms of where we are and what the council has done previously. Were it not for the GRA impact, you see that roughly half of that, of that $15.3 million is made up of what's happening with the redevelopment agency, the loss of revenue, the increase of cost to the general fund, netting out, and new revenues to the general fund, netting out to that $7.7 million number. What you see in 310,000 is our effort to start to march back towards the dedication of a portion of our sales tax into the CIP. Admittedly, this is 1%.
It's 1%?
1%. In this current fiscal year...
99, it was 50%.
99 was 50%, absolutely. So, you know, the long journey begins with the first step. Our good faith to council is to begin marching that back, and so you see $310,000 in the coming fiscal year. By the same token, the electric transfer is high. We need to, over time, reduce that. Our good faith deposit on that is $250,000, to bring that below $21 million.
Let me ask a question about that.
Yes, sir.
Having seen the water fund turn around on us in terms of, AB 218, was it?
Yes.
Is there any possibility that the same will happen to the electric fund transfer?
Is there a possibility?
In terms of state legislation that was telling us that you can transfer from your electric fund, similar to the water transfer?
If they changed the constitution, I suppose so, I'd have to defer to city attorney. In the foreseeable future, no. Long-term, I suppose, again, it's a change of the state constitution.
It's essentially, the electric rates are exempt from Prop. 218, so there's no current legislation that would impact the electric transfer.
But there could be something in the future that could...
There could be initiative or additional litigation.
That could limit that as well.
Correct. Over time, our goal is going to be to push that down to a more industry standard. It does, if we're at 21, it needs to be less than 15.
Percent?
15 million.
15 million.
When you look at the next three numbers, these are those organizational infrastructure issues that Bob and I were referring to. Over the next five years, to begin socking away more money in the liability fund, and really change the way, continue on the way it's been changed, to build that fund back up. This city's done well over the last couple of years, again, to get its arms around. But going into this budget, you knew that you were going to have to shore up liability, workers' comp, ISD. So again, there probably isn't a lot of mystery on your part in terms of where those numbers come from, other than, instead of living kind of hand-to-mouth as we pay out claims, rather to build the fund balance and then spend a good deal of time working on remediation. ISD is critically important to us. We have a lot of technology in this organization. The problem is, we haven't been very good at replacing or setting money aside for the replacement of that technology, because the technology continues to move quickly. We need to do that in a better way. You see, we're netting out some of the internal service funds. Capital outlay is a small chunk of that for things that are needed around the physical plant, that is, the city of Glendale. Unrealized savings, things that we had set out in this current fiscal year, that we were going to, especially collaborative types of efforts, that have just proven very, very difficult. Not that they've been abandoned, but trying to get, in this case, three cities to come together for a regional SWAT program, it's just taken longer than what we had hoped to do. Selling people's soft expertise for the administration of personnel and finance functions to the city of Pasadena, for example. As everybody is dealing with whatever is six inches in front of their face in the midst of this turmoil, we haven't realized those savings because we haven't brought those collaborations forward. That has to happen going forward. And that means that we'll have to get involved through management services to help bring that to fruition with our external partners, namely the cities of Burbank and Pasadena. I know they're just as frustrated as we are, it's just much easier said than done. Step increases for employees who are not at top step, that is something that exists that we do pay out...
Those automatic increases?
They are automatic, they're a function of performance reviews. Those were not removed in the previous MOU negotiations. And then, the other element, again, kind of...
How does it work?
I'm sorry?
How does it work?
Each year, I can't tell you how many steps you have here in Glendale. Usually, it's seven steps. It's nine steps for non-management, so you get...
So how do you get to the next step? Just by time? If I sit on my desk for two years, I'm there?
And a positive performance review.
And it's automatic, basically? If you're there a certain amount of time, plus you have positive reviews...
Then it's automatic.
Automatically, you get step up.
If you consider that the performance review part to be automatic, yeah. Yes, sir.
Do we have statistical data regarding how many people have gotten, did you expect this question?
Well, yeah, I...
How many people have gotten, how many have not gotten the step increases?
We do not have that data, but we are compiling that data for the coming fiscal year. I think what you will see, I think what our employees see, to their credit, it's been such a breath of fresh air in talking with our associations, people seem to understand that the system that we have, the civil service system that was created, was created for an organization 100 years ago, based on problems and realities that existed a generation before that. We don't have that now. This organization, all city organizations, especially one as progressive as Glendale, can and should look at alternative forms of compensation, because the old system, you know, I think everyone, no one knows quite what the answer is, but I think people, there's a general consensus that it probably isn't what we have today. It's administered well, we have good people pushing the process, but maybe it's time to reconsider the process. Everything else in our business has changed, generally speaking, except this. So that information will be forthcoming.
Could we implement performance measures as it relates to step increases to determine...
That is the performance review.
By department, how many people are getting step increases?
No, I don't think you could do that under the civil service system.
Really?
No, I think what you can do, and it would be...
Why don't you give me some blinders I can put on before I ask the question?
No, we'll, we will be able to come up with any number of metrics for departments to use in the review of employees. I mean, one of the things that we have, for example, if we were to go pay for performance, which we haven't even broached with employee groups, get anyone alarmed...
And let me make my, you know, let me make my intentions clear, that's not a number that I would need, it's a number that you would need as a city manager to better manage your departments, basically.
Certainly.
And it's a tool that you need... And it's a tool that you need to use to determine whether departments are actually properly reviewing the performance of their staff or not. If you see that everyone in a certain department is, every year, getting, not automatic, I don't want to keep saying automatic, but every year getting step increases, or 90-95 percent, you might deduct that the performance reviews are not being done properly, because I don't think there's an organization that gets 90 percent positive performance reviews all the time. There's always ups and downs.
No, in a healthy organization, you're going to see that bell curve distribution, right? You're going to see those folks that are just hardwired to take names and kick butt, and they do it, and other folks, you have to be pulling them along, and the majority of folks in the middle.
Right.
In terms of the performance reviews, whether they're being done properly by the supervisors or not, or one thing, the reviews themselves are quite extensive. I mean, they go into a number of different facets of each and every job responsibility, whether it's at the management level or a public works, basic entry type of person. So the reviews themselves, I think, are quite appropriate, how they're administered or applied, that story.
We will be bringing back to you a program in the coming fiscal year. I can't tell you it's going to be in place, I know it won't be in place for the coming fiscal year, but during the coming fiscal year, a system of accountability to ensure that the performance reviews are being done in a robust fashion. If all you're doing is going through the paces and just checking the boxes satisfactorily, you're not doing the department any good, you're not doing yourself as a supervisor any good, you're not doing the employee any good, because no one's growing or learning anything. And I'm not saying that's what's happening. I'm saying that we need to check our systems to make sure that it isn't and that there is a better way to get this done.
Yes. I mean, the whole point is, there's a quote from a very popular politician that says, "Trust but verify."
Certainly.
That's what I believe in.
And the idea here, and I'll just, to close the thought on what I mentioned, pay for performance, is that what we don't want to have is a mercenary attitude to a job that involves teamwork. That department is made, any given department is made much more successful when everybody is going in the same direction, pulling in the same direction. So finding ways to incent good teamwork is a real challenge, but it can be done through the evaluation process. A good evaluation process. And then the final stage here, I'm sorry, for the segue, the final stage here of the AO program, this 1.5, $2 million, if--
What program, AO?
The ambulance operator program.
Okay, thank you.
If all goes according to plan, this will zero out at the conclusion of the '12-'13 fiscal year, as anticipated. And we are confident that that will happen, based on the feedback we're getting from the department. Moving ahead to kind of where are we now? If that's the number, and we won't ask you today to confirm your opinions on that, but we would like to get some direction by the close of the session tomorrow. If, for the sake of discussion, we can say, however, that the budget gap, we need to focus on $15.2 million. We know that the redevelopment hit is coming. Council has directed us already to prepare for the practical worst-case scenario. We are doing that. If we know that we have these organizational infrastructure items to shore up, we know that we have to be focused there. 15.2 starts to become that real target that we're chasing after. So how do we address it? New revenues, certainly is something that we look at, financing and borrowings. The use of reserves, however, I would strongly encourage, and I know I don't need to do that with this particular council, but that it's short-term only and not to fund ongoing operations, but solely for projects and short-term programs. And then expenditure control. At the end of the day, making sure that our expenses line up with what our resources are. And we'll talk about those items as we go forward. Just very basically, when we talk about revenues, next slide, you know, it's easy to talk about revenue. It's something very difficult, especially for a policymaker, to simply wave a wand and say, "Yes, let's go and increase revenue." I talked a little bit about the difficulty in trying to grow more sales tax and property tax that happens over time. But as we talk about fees for service, charges, fees, licenses, as I mentioned previously, that's one of the top four revenue producers for the city, but we still have to have it, one, tied to the cost of providing service, so that people know that they're getting value, and by the law, we can't charge more than what the service provides. It has to be equitable, and we want to make sure that, and certainly we follow, if it's 218 applicable, as was mentioned earlier, that we do that. But at the same time, we want to make sure that the other side of the coin on revenue is that we aren't being harmful to our own interests by pricing ourselves out of the market, even if the cost of providing service is in excess of what we're charging today. It may be that the council's policy is to encourage or discourage a certain type of activity. That will help determine whether or not we recoup the full cost of providing the service. At the same time, in the midst of this economy, there's a good case to be made that this is not the time to simply look at all fees, charges, new fees and charges, and say, "We need to raise revenue that way."
Do we know, or do we have data in terms of past year, two years, how much fees we have increased?
That will be coming to you tomorrow's presentation about fees, charges, revenue. We actually, with CPI, the CPI rule that was approved by council previously, I want to say that number is 600?
For increases?
Yes. Don't quote, you will have that information tomorrow as part of the presentation.
Because I remember we increased a number of fees, including licenses--
Correct.
And so--
All the application fees, I think, were increased--
Right. --at one point.
And that, again, that goes back to, last year was the first year we did a comprehensive fee study to look at all the fees and brought a number of new ones and increases to a lot of ones that have been stagnant for years, and built that into the budget. This year, it's just more of a maintenance of, you know, increasing those fees to the extent of CPI, or there are a few new ones that will present here.
Can we gauge in any way, can we gauge the results of those increases? What have they been?
Sure. We can go back and get the data. I don't know if we'll get it done by tomorrow, but we--
No, I don't expect it to be done by tomorrow.
We will--
Unless you really want to work tonight.
We're going to work tonight either way. The activity versus the fee increase. And you can see the relation between the two.
Right. It would be interesting to see.
Okay, certainly. Okay, then, so that's on the revenue side. Let's talk about the expense side. The thing that jumps into mind first and foremost, certainly in the minds of our employees, as well as the people that are serviced by all of our different employees, is layoffs and contracting out where applicable. You know, on the positive side, we do get savings pretty quickly, as folks are just ushered out of the organization, and that there is this somewhat arcane sense of equity, because it's generally last hired, first fired. And again, we can contract out, but keeping in mind that contracting out, especially if we're going to, if we want to sustain that level of service, we're not looking for a diminished level of service, you save a marginal cost at best, because the cost that is derived from the contractor oftentimes is submitted to you à la carte. So if we are going to just have our parks be serviced by a contractor that's going to blow and go, just go in, you know, spend 20 minutes at a park and then move out, well, when we call for somebody to come back and provide some special TLC for the playground area, or for other facilities, or just for the park itself, that cost starts to add up. And so very often, when we talk about contracting out, the savings that we anticipate, in reality, isn't the savings that ultimately is realized. The other problem with laying off, what we're seeing again in this somewhat arcane system of civil service that we have, even though it's well-implemented by our staff and by the commission, is that the bumping rights that exist for all of the different employees, if you held, if I were to lay off a position, an analyst, if that analyst had worked in another department and another position, they have that experience. They get to bump to that and displace the person at that location. And that person gets to displace somebody else. And in an organization where we have 1,800 employees, you can imagine the different combinations that exist. Just going through the community development department layoff structure has been a pretty mammoth undertaking. Multiply that by two or three times, and you see that what you are trying to achieve isn't necessarily what's derived at the end of the day. And what suffers, ultimately, it's service to the community that suffers, because somebody who did not do that job, they'd been working in the library for the last 10 years, suddenly is working with constituent complaints. And really, that's not their skill set. So we're setting that employee up for failure. The department suffers by virtue of not having a key player and a key role, and the community gets a lesser level of service. It's a very imprecise program. And so while it's certainly available to us, it's something that I think we need to be aware of in terms of its shortcomings. Last and certainly not least, because of the demographics of this particular organization, for all organizations, but this particular organization especially, if we were to lay off employees, what you're probably, en masse, what you're probably going to see is employees take that bump, those top-level, more expensive employees take the bump down, and ultimately, what comes out the other side of the organizational layoff structure is this unintended consequence, but it's the newest, youngest, kind of the farm system, if you will, of our organization. Well, those employees at that top end, we're going to leave in the next two or three years anyway, as they near the end of their career, and probably will, as the economy starts to heal itself. So what's left in year three, four, or five? An organization without that critical mid-tier of supervisors and leaders within the organization, and no farm system behind it. So there's no continuity of service. That--
What happens, so then you can't, those people that are those senior people that you're trying to lay off, who then bump down, do they retain that salary when they bump down into a different position?
No, I don't believe so. They take the salary of that position that they're bumping down to.
A question.
Yes, sir.
Those that are laid off, is there a way to structure that, as we all know, someday, sometime in the distant future, the economy will turn around? We will be hiring. Is there any way to structure those that are laid off, get first rights, or rehire?
For a period of time, we do keep a layoff list--
Two years.
For two years. And so those folks would have a right to come back and work. My expectation is, and my experience is, that the folks who are very skilled, that we would otherwise groom to be the five-tool players of our organization in the future, will probably get picked up by somebody else. So we've trained them, we've cultivated them, but somebody else is going to reap the benefit of it. And that balance is very, very difficult, and it's very emotional, and we have to treat it with a hefty degree of respect, because people have given us their career. At the same time, we have folks that are trying to give us their career, and therein lies a very delicate balance.
I hate to say it, but maybe they'd be interested in coming back, as we have a good pension program. They're going into private sector.
Well, as I say, you are, as Glendale, are much further ahead than other cities. And so if they got picked up by another city--
That's different.
--I can almost assure you they are not paying the employee per, and they are likely not even doing cost sharing, although they may be in a second tier. There's a lot to be said for what's happened in this organization over the last few years, certainly. Council's made the right decisions on the major issues.
But are other cities hiring?
Some are.
I mean, this seems to be, in my, in my seven years on council, that's always the, you know, the final answer, the determining factor in any sort of adjustments in staffing or compensation or salaries. It's always, well, someone else is going to get them, someone else is going to get them. But from what I'm reading, that other cities are going through even more drastic cuts than we are. There isn't often a empty position in any other city that they're out recruiting, actively recruiting. There may be a few, obviously, but many cities are going through their own bumping rights discussion that we are. So they're oftentimes overstaffed. The city of LA is proposing to cut off, to lay off how many? Is the city of LA going to come and hire someone from the outside, when they're letting hundreds go?
I sincerely doubt that as an organization that behemoth would, right? But there are a number of cities that will, and I think there are a lot of non-governmental organizations and private employers that are looking for technical, professional people. When you look at the employment rate, or the unemployment rate, there are, the unemployment rate's still 11 percent, but there are many, many, many jobs that are open right now for qualified, technical, professional people. So the cream of that crop probably end up getting picked up, especially if they're at the younger end of their career, where they're making 50, 60, $70,000, as opposed to somebody making $170,000. That person probably doesn't. You're right. But I don't think, that's the person that ends up, if you go layoff, that person bumps down. The person that bumps out the other side is the person that's probably most marketable in this depressed economy, recessed economy, I'm sorry. We talk about furloughs and service reductions. That is something that sometimes makes sense, depending on the service level that the council wants to see, depending on the type of service being provided. I can tell you, for example, furloughs do not work in public safety, in my humble experience. Oftentimes, what you're seeing, while you do generate savings, depending on the type of service, depending on the expectations of the community, you may end up having to hire back people on overtime to come back and work, and it simply does not always pan out for you. The idea here, too, is that if you are looking ultimately at layoffs and removing bodies, then to, then to further cut hours by furlough, you're basically getting fewer people doing even less work. It just isn't as cost-effective, especially because, you know, if it's a temporary fix, your service is diminished considerably. The item that we have talked a little bit more about, and we've written about it, and certainly we've begun talking with our employee groups about it, is this notion of advanced attrition and retirement incentive. How do we get folks, if we don't want to end up with that accordion-like compaction, where we're eliminating our farm system and losing long-term, intermediate term, losing continuity at the upper levels? If we want to avoid that, can we then look at retirement incentives? Something that is not uncommon in the private sector, it's becoming more prevalent in the public sector, and the idea of taking folks at the upper end, in particular, at the upper end of the pay ranges, and moving them into retirement. Certainly is much more strategic than the chainsaw approach of layoffs and all the chaos that causes. This is much more the scalpel. It is an incentive. It cannot be mandated on anybody. But if folks were to accept this buyout, it helps maintain that talent pipeline, because you're removing specific targeted pieces of the organization, and it is a more strategic way to reshape the organization. At the same time, it is less cost-efficient in the first year, and in fact, even over the long term, it can be less cost-efficient, if in fact, the city lacks the discipline to keep those positions vacant. There is something to be said for removing positions and then hiring new people back at the entry level versus the top step and at a second tier. That makes lots of economic sense, but the real savings, the $15 million savings, or a big chunk of it anyway, doesn't come unless we hold those positions vacant.
Can't you, as a city manager, can't you say if this individual retires, there's no, that position is eliminated?
Yes.
So it's basically up to you to make sure that management, management doesn't need discipline. You can basically dictate what they're going to hire and what they're not going to hire.
That is true, sir. However, I would submit to you that, to the extent that council wants certain things funded, you know, we will have a historical librarian on the weekends. We will have that.
Well, I can assure you on my part, I can tell you that if anyone, I mean, retires voluntarily because of this incentive program, I for one will ask that you not hire anyone in their position.
And certainly, I do appreciate that. It's easier--
For the, for, just for the sake of the savings.
Yeah, well--
Because that's what we need to look at.
If you go back to that slide, and you don't have to go back here, but the slide that we were showing, that 82 percent number, if we're able to generate a savings through incentives, where we can come back and as an agreed-upon principle of how we will operate this organization, and say, "Our personnel costs are going to be, as a matter of operation, capped at 75 percent, unless council authorizes otherwise," well, I think that puts us on that road, so everyone knows, hey, this is basically a salary cap. This is, you know, whatever we need to do underneath that, we can, to deliver a level of service. And the same thing goes for capping the component of management. I think that's what I'm talking about, in terms of that management discipline. Can we actually cut those positions and keep them gone for a good stretch of time? And ultimately, that stretch of time is a function of the levels of service council wants to see.
Well, let me say, I worked, I hate to sound like Mr. Weed, I worked workforce development for 28 years, actually--
As an engineer?
A little bit more. As an engineer. As a personnel engineer, social service engineer. And, yeah, incentives for retirement, et cetera, it works. It works not just in government entities, it works in large corporations, and there's no question when people are reaching--
That's preferable, actually.
Right? When they're reaching the end of their professional career, at whatever level they're at, they might look at what the future is in store for them and think, "Yeah, why not? If I get a little bit something on the way out." So I think it's absolutely worth investigating, working on, and seeing what it can translate-- So I think it's absolutely worth investigating, working on, and seeing what it can translate to.
Well, that's how the Corps of Engineers got rid of me. They bought me out. But I was working for almost.
Happily.
Happily. Happily for me. No, that was, Scott, that was meant, I was hap-
I'm not saying this.
I was happy to get out, but I had built up enough salary, I was working for virtually nothing. When you get to that point, why stay if they're giving you a cash payout? I don't know whether they filled a spot behind me, but, you know, they, that was, that was in 2000.
The tool that we would be looking at, use, there are several tools, we would evaluate them, come back with a recommendation to council, something that costs less, most cost-efficient for us. But generally speaking, they revolve around adding service credit for those employees. So it's a, and they have some flexibility as to how they realize that service credit. But the idea is to make it as cost-effective, and then, as possible, and then hold that position vacant for as long as possible. We talk about also personnel cost reductions. Hopefully, this doesn't come to pass for the cons that are noted there, because it does become the self-fulfilling prophecy and negative morale with the folks that are remaining. We are trying to streamline and do literally more with less, and to the extent that that comes to fruition, you may have fewer people who are-
What do you mean by that? What do you mean further personnel, you mean layoffs? Is that what we're talking about?
Not, no.
What's further, what's further personnel cost reduction?
You are going, we're going to reduce all salaries across the board.
Oh, okay.
And if you have fewer people doing more work, and you reduce their salary, it's, you start to get into this downward spiral, especially if we're the only ones playing that particular game. It gets back to that question on, in terms of losing competent employees. So it has to be on the table, has to be on the table, but it's a function of what we're able to secure through other means.
Would, in a situation like that, would we have to renegotiate with all the employee organizations?
Yes, sir. So staff recommendation at this point, again, this isn't for, we certainly can discuss it today among council, but we'd be looking for direction on a couple of items by the end of tomorrow. But what we are recommending to you is to implement that retirement incentive, or at least give us the opportunity to go and explore in earnest with employees, to be able to report back to you by your next round of study sessions, as to what the savings really could be. At the same time, I think that in a slightly different conversation, we need to talk about restructuring the civil service system, and how the bumping process works. But again, that's something that would happen during the course of the coming fiscal year, not as part of the, at the outset of the coming fiscal year. When we talk about capping personnel expenditures, management costs by council policy, I think that helps set the tone for the cost efficiency of the organization on a going-forward basis. At the same time, if, the trade-off to the departments is that if we are going to allow you to restructure the department in a more intelligent, strategic way, then what we have to bring back to the council is that departments are going to start to look a little bit different. We're going to have different people in different places doing different things, and that's easy to say, difficult to actually do. I mean, literally restructuring departments, not just changing the names of departments, but looking at what they do, and what services are emphasized and what are not. When we talk about, and this is something that has to come up, and certainly we'll discuss tomorrow, modest revenue increases, you know, focusing on certain areas where we provide service, and if we can't be competitive in that area, we need to have a very serious discussion about, you know, removing ourselves from providing a level of service. And at the same time, still remaining competitive with the markets, so we're not priced out of the market, and/or requiring our residents and customers to pay more than they otherwise should within certain bounds. The last part of this presentation, and certainly open up for council discussion, is a discussion of the structure and priorities of city council. As you've heard me say probably ad nauseam by now, council sets the tone. The success of the council, the wisdom of the council, the fiscal prudence of the council, all set the tone for what happens within the departments and out in the community, for that matter. So as we look at what, how we will structure the department, the things that will animate the budget are the strategic goals and the key performance indicators. Now, council went with a fine-tooth comb through the budget process last year, and identified the essential, the essential and priority and discretionary items in that budget. Much, or nearly all of the discretionary was eliminated, and now we've had departments go through that exercise again, and trying to create some discretionary expenditures, or trying to define discretionary expenditures that might be cut as well. That being said, I think at this point, in this coming year's budget, we need to start at a very high level, and then drill down to where the council wants to be. So in line with that, what we'll be bringing to you, in addition to a department overview, a very, I don't want to say basic, but a summary budget of all the different departments, and then taking a look at those strategic goals, those handful of goals that each department has to accomplish if it's to be determined to be a successful year. And then show you how the personnel costs, the M&amp;O costs, the capital costs, all line up with expenditures. At the same time, and my goal is hopefully that that will help us define what that success is. As you all have discussed earlier at this dais just today, how do we know when we're there? How do we know when we've been successful? Well, these are the goals that we have to achieve. And then make sure that we're actually stretching, that we're trying to push the envelope as much as we can, if the council is allowing us to restructure in a way that the departments see is useful vis-a-vis the retirement incentive. You know, we do want to make sure that we are as effective as possible. The last part, the key performance indicators, you've had in your budget document more as a summary for the year-end. I see key performance indicators as a quarterly exercise by the departments that are really the tactical measures about how well a department is functioning. These are items that are strategic, they're measurable, they're attainable, they're relevant, they're timely. They basically tell you how your department is functioning. I could meet budget all day long if all we did was come in, turn on the lights, and sit in our offices. But that's not good service, that's not what you want or expect, and so we need to make sure that we are capitalizing on the value proposition to residents. How do we know that it's happening? Well, you do it through the key performance indicators, through performance measurement. Those are the elements, that's the basic outline of the budget, but those priorities that basically form the foundation of the budget really have to come from council. This is what you had in the current fiscal year. Between now and next, the next, by the end of the next study session, prior to us actually formulating the budget to be submitted in early June to you, to be presented to you in early June, we want to know, as staff, are these still those priorities? Is there an order of those priorities? Does something need to be enhanced, does something, is it a luxury that we can spend less time on? Really, what is it, what is your, lack of a better term, vision for what the community needs to be, what this organization then needs to do, to meet that vision for the community? But again, this is what you've had in the current year. My question to you is, does it still hold? If we proceed along these lines, is that what the council wants? As I say, by the end of this first round of study sessions, we'd like consensus, or direction, clear direction, on the, just kind of a discussion, go to the next one, Bob.
We would like to know if there, if we're on the right track with respect to trying to tackle that full 15, or do we believe it might be too disruptive? Should we look at other solutions, other alternatives, to trying to cut out $15 million on an ongoing basis? That'll bring a strategic, not strategic, structural balance, as opposed to just operational balance. And then, secondly, the tools that we might use, I've heard some support now for incentives that would be, because it's a complex tool, we'd need to get working on that sooner than not. So that concludes our staff presentation. Happy to answer any questions for the council.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Weaver?
Just a comment. Human nature being what it is, people not miss something until it's taken away from them. I was born and raised in Glendale. Up until 15, 20 years ago, I couldn't tell you who the mayor was, who the council was. The garbage was picked up, the lights went on, had my water, drove on good streets. I didn't care. Everything was being provided. Now, you start to take things away. You take away the library hours, you take away anything, then the people will start showing up. We all know there's a certain small statistical number of people that will always be here, off and on, questioning what we do, because they're civic-minded and they're involved. But the vast majority will only react when you take it away. That will be down on the line. We'll make moves, and we'll start to hear from the public, and we'll have to react to that. So we'll be playing a guessing game up front on what we can take away, maybe, in the short term, and maybe to find out, well, we've got to rethink this. Other than that, I'd like the presentation very thorough, logically thought out. Just going to be tough getting the 15.2 million after the 18 last year. Sure hope we don't have to do this again.
Okay. Well, in terms of council priorities, I'll talk about my priorities. As I have in the past, my first priority is community service, actually. I believe we are here to serve the community, and the different departments and different services that we provide are geared towards providing the service to the community. So the last, the most distressing thing that I hear in the community is that they go into a department, and I don't want to single out any department, and their comment is, we're treated as if we're thieves or something. And Glendale is such a difficult city to work with. You know, it has to be understood that we're here for the community, and the community's not here for us. All the council priorities that you have here are all well-thought-out, and they're very, certainly positive, and I certainly support them. But I think the overall, the overall approach of the city should be that we are here to provide a service to the community, whether it be safety, whether it be permits, whether it be parks, or any of those services that we provide, or public works. It has to be, it has to come from the point of view that we are, we are here as a service kind of organization. The second is financial responsibility. I, I, no one is, no one is above the law, I want, I mean, the organization to take into account that the resources that are provided to them are provided by the taxpayers, and they have to take care of those resources. And I had an instance this week where, where I relayed my concerns to you about one individual, and it's irrelevant at this point who that individual is and what department it was, it was from, it was clear to me that there was complete disregard to the resources that they were using, and complete disregard to the laws that the rest of us are subject to. And, you know, everyone is subject to the same laws, whether they're city employees, or whether they're council members. If I have a violation, I paid a violation this week. You know, I had a parking ticket, and I went and paid it. And I would hope that everyone else in the same situation would receive the same parking ticket, whether they're city employees or not, and go and pay them. That's what I expect from me and my family, and I expect that from everyone that works for the city. Financial responsibility is also very important, and I'm, I have to commend you, actually, for this presentation. And I think the issue of key performance indicators that I've raised in the past, I'm glad that it is being taken seriously, and it's, these measures are a way of managing any organization, and those are tools that you need to use, not me, for providing those core services and the service that this community expects from us as an organization. So thank you very much for, you know, for your presentation. I think it is a good beginning to our budget process, and I look forward to continuing to work with you on developing the current year's budget. Thank you.
I have a question. First, let me say, I think it was a very good presentation, and I'm very happy with the direction that we're going, to be balanced in a much more systemic, operational way going forward. I think it's a very different way of thinking about our budget, and about the way that we provide services, and I think that's positive. My question relates to the performance indicators, actually. Not so much for individual departments, but for programs. Well, it's actually, it's not so much about the performance indicators. My question is this, and it's a question about the process as we continue with these study sessions, and that is, are we going to, as we talk about layoffs, are we going to be hearing the programmatic impact of those particular layoffs? So it's one thing to say, we're going to lay off 10 people, 20 people, 100 people, 200 people, but we need to know really what the service impacts are for the community. And so have you, have you been able to find a way to tie those particular layoffs, and those particular jobs and bodies, to the actual impacts that it's going to have on the community?
The short answer is no, not yet. Until we, until the council would allow us to figure out if we're doing layoffs, which invites a whole set of circumstances, or experiment with the incentives, and then if we need layoffs then.
Forget I said layoffs, incentives, personnel reduction. It's still the same question. Do we have a way of relating personnel reduction to service impacts?
Until we know who's going, no.
Okay. So first of all, I agree with the other comments that have been made, Mr. Weaver and Mr. Menucha. I am happy with your target for the amount of personnel that's serving the community, and I do think that that does call for personnel reductions. So let me just get that out on the table. I think the public has to understand that with those personnel reductions, there will be a reduction in service. There's no way around that. I know that people like to think that there's 100 employees sitting around the city that are just twiddling their thumbs and doing nothing. There may be a few, there may be, but believe me, you can't lay off large numbers of people and not have service impacts in the community. What I'm going to need to know, as much as we can, is what those service impacts are going to be. And it's very easy for us to talk about this in the abstract, but I remember when we tried to, when we tried to eliminate two park rangers, when we tried to eliminate one person from the skateboard park, and how upset community members get about service reductions. And, you know, we may say, well, if we reduce some people in permitting, no one's going to notice. Well, they will notice. They may not come in en masse and complain the way that parents will, but, about reductions to children's programs, but they'll notice. So we need to know that. And that ties back to the performance indicators, because to me, that's one of the things that's really been lacking. I remember it was either a year ago or two years ago, when we were talking about our budget, and we were making cuts to programs, and how frustrating it was to me, and I voiced to those concerns, that it was very frustrating to be asked to choose between programs. Is it going to be the PAL program? Is it going to be the STAR program? Is it going to be a senior program? Without having any indicators of how effective those programs are. I mean, all that we really had in some cases were the amount of people that were served, but that's not enough. We really need to know a lot more on a very specific basis about our programs. If we're spending $1,000 per child for a program, what is really the benefit? And some of that, I know, takes years to accrue that data, but we have to start doing that for all of our programs. Who are the people that are served? Are those services available in any other format, from any other agency, or any other community-based organization? And how effective are we doing in providing those services? So it's not just things like, how fast are we issuing permits? It's really, with a lot of our social service programs, are we really doing a good enough job to warrant the investment? And that's certainly, I agree with the same performance indicators for our departments and our employees. I think it's very important that we have metrics, that we know how we're evaluating, and that we're able to do that on an ongoing basis as we budget. And it's, this year, and the same way we did a few years ago, in some ways, we're doing it blind, because we don't have those indicators. And they should have been developed for 10, 20, 30 years, as we've had these programs. So it's going to be very difficult for us to do that. I will voice also my support for the incentives for retirement, rather than the layoffs, and not just because it's more humane, but what's very disturbing to me, and what I didn't realize until we went into this process, is about the bumping rights, and how you can have someone who works in redevelopment, and all of a sudden, they start bumping down the line, and they might end up in the library. And is that really doing the right thing for the community that we serve, given that you may have someone who's much better, doing a much better job service-wise in the library, that ends up losing their job? So I think we can do, as you said, a much more targeted type of personnel reduction, and even though it initially costs more, and it does cost more than just doing a layoff, I think that the return that the public gets in terms of that performance makes that a justifiable expense. Because you can really, you know, in some ways, pick and choose who you want to keep and who you don't want to keep. I may have more comments later, but I think this was a really interesting presentation. I'm looking forward to- I'm looking forward to the upcoming study sessions. Maybe looking forward to is not the right word, but I'm hoping that as we continue this process, and we started this a few years ago, I'm not in a position of ever being an elected official at a time when we were saying, "Gosh, we have all this extra money. What are we going to spend it on?" I mean, since I've been here in 2009, we've been reducing the amount of personnel. We've been renegotiating with our employee groups and cutting their benefits and reducing their salaries and reducing programs. So I know how it's going to be a difficult process, but I'm hoping that at the end of all this, we'll end up with a much more sustainable organization, a much leaner organization, and that we really focus on the type of services that we need to be delivering and the services that we deliver the best. So that's, again, why those performance indicators are so important and those metrics are going to be so important. Thank you.
Mr. Najarian. Well, I get this feeling every seven years, every time the budget comes before us, where I'm asked to scrutinize and in a relatively short period of time, read, review, and understand numbers in a two-hour session that staff has spent days, if not weeks, compiling, analyzing, fine tuning. And it's difficult. I know where my priorities are, as to where I want the city to go, as to what level of service I want the residents to have. And the budget isn't just the bottom line, making sure that it's balanced. It's really a document that sets forth the priorities for the city. There's a, many, if not most, of the employees that have been working on this or have been involved with the city have been involved a lot longer than I have, perhaps a lot longer than any of us on the council. In a sense, it's the staff that frames the issues for us on the council. You know, it's within the four corners of this document. The problem is, I never know if there's another way to look at the budget, if there's other ideas which can come forth. We're a pretty big city. We've got a pretty big budget. What I'd like to see is an independent budget analyst to come in, to review these figures, to review the way these figures are compiled, and to compare that with other cities, large, small, perhaps the same size we are, and to come to the council with that independent review of the budget. Despite the highest respect I have for staff, you've got a certain mindset of doing things. You're perhaps more, I mean, when it comes, we just talked about the layoffs versus the incentivized retirement. A budget analyst may come forth and say, "You know what? In my opinion, my independent opinion, the best way is to do it this way. Forget about furloughs. Go straight to layoffs." This is just as an example, I'm not espousing layoffs. You guys have too much in that management. That figure of 70, mid-70% is too high. You really should be down at 60%. Or, it was a 30% figure, I think, with regard to that. Because we are not afforded the time and the respect, on some on the dais, to go through these numbers. And you guys are the experts. Mr. Elliott, you have had years and years of this. Mr. Ochoa, years as well. I sort of get it at the very end of this, and you're giving us just a few options on what to do, and we're assured that it is, we're on the way to best practices. But I get that feeling in my gut every year when we go through this budget, that we're being led down what staff feels is the best way to deal with the budget. But I, as one, would like to see someone else confirming that and saying, "You know what? These figures, not so much the dollars and the cents, but this approach and the general theme in preparing the budget is being done in the very best practices." That's one thing they could say. They could say, "You know what? You guys have to break out of this mold and look at preparing your budget from a completely different perspective." I think that would do a lot for me, as someone who is trying to absorb very technical and very voluminous numbers and figures, as to how we want to ultimately prepare the budget and steer the city. I would feel much more comfortable if we had such a person, such a group, perhaps there's some that will do it pro bono, perhaps there's some that can do it on a relatively economical basis. But I think we need that. I think we've gotten to the point where we've got to say, "Let's look at this fresh," especially in the atmosphere of shrinking revenues. I mean, when, you know, when it's harvest time and there's enough to go around, it's not so much an issue, but we're talking about really dramatic, this is our third or fourth year of dramatic cuts to the organization. Are we doing it the right way? Are we overlooking any other alternative that could be out there? So I don't know if my colleagues would support me on that. I don't know if we're too late in the cycle anyway to have any effect, but I'm telling you, it's a, for me, it's a very disconcerting feeling at this time of year, every year. You know, here it is, this is what we need to do, and in my mind, there's always these what-ifs. You know, what does this number really mean? Are we really comparing apples to oranges when we look at the level of staffing and the level of salaries? Oh, no. Well, we're adding in, you know, we're loading non-general fund salaries from the year before into the general fund. Is our hiring freeze having any effect? How many employees are really going to consider a early retirement? A lot of questions, and I just wanted to share that.
Well, I don't disagree with the concept, but I do think it's a little late in the cycle. I don't know how we could get this done, bring someone in and have him or her do the analysis required. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes. The beauty of being from the outside is, one, you get the considered opinion from council and from staff that have been doing it this way for a long time, but also the experience that I have in another organization about the way that that was done. That said, there is periodically the need to have yet another set of eyes look at our processes and procedures. If the council would entertain the thought, one of the things that I want to do shortly after we adopt this budget, because it is late in the year and because this is a year of flux, is to do, bring in a consultant to do a management audit, to make sure that what our processes are, are what they should be. It's certainly a tool for me as the city manager to have this notion of, you know, what I've seen and what I think about those different dynamics, and what do we really know based against best management practice? I appreciate what Mr. Najarian's saying. I think to the extent that we do that shortly after the adopted budget, while it's all fresh in everybody's head, will help us come to understand what are those best management practices for Glendale. Because trying to find two cities that are apples and apples, you know, we may be apples and apples, but one's a Granny Smith and another one's a Delicious Red. So the idea is that they are a little bit different. But I think that that would actually work out extraordinarily well and be well timed right around July. Unfortunately, I think we are a little late heading into this budget, but if this budget is a year of change anyway, it is well timed.
I think at any time, it would be a good practice to have an outside consultant look at it as well, so I do agree with you. And Mr. Quintero.
I have two speaker cards. Herbert Milano, followed by Mike Moehill.
Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano. I believe that this is probably one of the best and most informative analyses that I've seen in the budget session to start with. It gives you an opportunity to really assess fairly quickly the challenges that you face. And it is basically whenever you have a tough situation, when leadership really shows up. You know, when things are going perfectly fine, then, you know, you could pretty much go with the flow, but it is here during these times that you're basically going to face your toughest decisions. I would like to make several suggestions in this process. And oftentimes, I've seen in these sessions that the focus turns out to be on the general fund. The general fund is only 20% of the overall budget. And I think that you need to look beyond the general fund. For example, the Glendale Fire Department, 35% of their budget is outside the general fund. So, and the same thing with many of the other costs the city basically has to carry forward. I suggest that you focus on the trends of the increases in the expenditures for the past 10 years. It will give you a fairly general idea. The population has not changed very much in the last 10 years. That will give you a beautiful way of basically assessing whether the number of employees by department basically is commensurate with the type of employees, the number of employees that we have now. You have another issue, that you have a significant cut in the CIP funds. Well, how many employees does it take when you have $10 million worth of capital improvements? You know, if you reduce it significantly, then you should have many employees out there that really, in fact, may need to be let go, because you don't have those capital improvements. I suggest that you focus on the other funds, particularly in the internal service funds, that need, I think that needs your careful attention. I would suggest to avoid the temptation to look at revenue increases. You know, I think that if I were a city employee, I would be kissing the ground that we're walking on here, because they have no idea of what it is truly to be without a job or having to have, you know, significant layoffs or having to look for a job every three years. This is amazing to figure out that individuals continually to think that, well, maybe their pay didn't increase for the last three years, but their benefits were. In other words, the city taxpayers pay to sustain the benefits. And having a steady job is incredibly meaningful. You know, when individuals can pay their mortgage month to month and not have to worry about it, my God, I'm telling you, if you were working for the city of Glendale, thank God that you have had a permanent employment for a long time. I would suggest to avoid the temptation to tap into the reserves. The reserves have been used in the past inappropriately, in my opinion, and I believe that we need a full assessment of what those reserves really entail. I would suggest to focus first on the departments with the highest labor and benefit costs and going that last year, we saw almost an equivalent amount of time being given to departments that have like, you know, 60% of the general fund, and they were given as much time as a department that had only 4% of the general fund. I think it should be proportional to that. At the end, you have salaries and benefits of $247 million, and I think that's really where the tire meets the road. I think that there is an opportunity to avoid significant layoffs if we think back about rolling back the benefits. And when I say rolling back the benefits, it really means that if you go back to the benefits that were in place in year 2000, you're not necessarily cutting the benefits. You're basically restoring to what it used to be, which was a more prudent approach to pensions and benefits. If not, then I think one of the first options for you is to look at furloughs, especially the situation where you have every other Friday off. That could be right there. You take that other Friday off without pay. And I think that allows, if that's going to allow a significant number of employees to be saved, I think that a shared sacrifice that is really meaningful may be the approach. I commend all of you with regard to the tone and the seriousness that you've taken the approach. I personally would like to, you know, bring forth anything that I can contribute to you in any assistance with regard to looking at these or finding the resources that can look at these trends and see what options are there that may be available to you. The real assumption, I think, has hit home after all these years. I truly appreciate the tone from all the council members and the city manager with regard to the conduct of these budget sessions. Thank you.
Mike Moehill.
Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero, council members, viewing audience. We had a very lively discussion this afternoon. I'd like to first thank Mr. Weaver for his wisdom in public service. I know he's had a lot of experience in public service and how it runs. Mr. Najarian, you said, "Does staff want to save jobs, actually? Perhaps we need an outside consultant." The problem I see is we have unions and CalPERS. If we eliminated the unions and the CalPERS, we don't have to worry about where we're going to move people because of the seniority system. That's what's going to bring down this government here, is the seniority system. Why would you want somebody from the library department working the GWP? Because that person has more seniority. We must promote based on merit, not based on the fact that you've been with the city X amount of years. They don't do that in private industry. We need to be run like a private industry. We need 401K. We need Social Security. We don't need a civil service commission. They don't have that in private industry. Those days are long gone. I hear the comment, "We've got to have the best that money can buy." Well, I can remember several years ago, when they were talking about the expense of the Pacific Pool, and some staff member wrote, it said, "It was going to cost $375 million to operate the Pacific Park Pool." Someone said, "No, no, 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 Moehill. That was Mr. Yasef. He says $375,000." "Oh, it was an oops or an dot, but we got the best that money could buy." And you know what's funny about that best that money could buy? The city manager signed off on that report, the city attorney, man in charge of parks and recreation, and all senior staff. There was over $1 million in payroll and they signed off on that report. We got the best that money could buy that afternoon. Isn't it time to look at an alternative way of looking at things? The past is gone. It's the future. General Motors used to be paying $30 an hour for their union employees, and now they're taking $15 an hour. And they're happy to have that job at $15 an hour. I would go back to every one of our employees and say, "Look, this is the situation. You all take 20% cut in every person's pocketbook, or we're going to start looking for other people to replace your position, because you know what? There are millions of people who want your job." "Oh, no, no, we got civil service commission. We got the union to protect us." Well, you know what? We also have bankruptcy down the road. Let's get real. Planning Department, I have people coming up to me and say, "Mr. Moehill, the planning department, go to the planning department," and they're standing around doing nothing, but they make me go back and forth with my plans. I've had people, builders, come to me and says, "Mike, I can't do business with the city of Glendale." I say, "No, go talk with your councilman. I'm only a city activist." Alternative form of compensation, looking for more accountability. Thank you, city manager. Those are great words. I appreciate that. Questions and answers, questions today were very good, but the present system is not working. You know, in private industry, or when you were in school and your classes were getting too hard, you changed, you looked at it differently, didn't you? Look at yourself in the mirror. You're in the driver's seat. We elected you to make decisions. You can do right now, it was easy in 2001 to give fire and safety a pay raise, so all they have to do is to age 50 and get 90% of their last year's salary for pension for life. You can go ahead today and say, "Let's bring that back. Let's make them retire at age 55 and get only 75% pension for life." Social Security employees today are maximum, even if you were Bill Gates, was $30,000. What makes a city employee worth more than the man who works in private industry, an engineer? I have a brother-in-law who's a doctor, and he told me that for the last six paychecks, he couldn't pay himself. I said, "What do you mean, Jeff?" He said, "My expenses were greater than my revenue, Mike." Really? And you're a big doctor. He says, "You know what? I don't have someone backing me up." Thank you.
Mr. Quintero? I'm sorry, I have one more comment. There was the other question, which we should probably take up at a later
There was the other question, which we should probably take up at a later date, about the 15, about becoming operationally balanced, $15 million, whether we do it all this year or not. And I really want to know the impacts of doing that rather than spreading it out over three years. If we really feel that we're going to be able to sort of fix the systemic issues in the budget, and that we really are kind of at the bottom, as far as we know, then I'd like to know the benefits and the pros and cons of doing it all in one year and really socking the community with a lot of service cuts or trying to smooth that out over a few years, if possible. Because I don't know, I mean, at this point, sitting here, I don't know the answer to what, to that question. I'd like to hear more about that. Okay?
Yeah, I agree with that comment. I want to thank you, Mr. Ochoa, Ms. Beers, Mr. Elliott, and all the staff. I liked the presentation. It was concise, to the point. We will be back tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., and the session will run to 3:00. All right, thank you very much.
Are these slides available to the public over there? And we don't really need to print color ones. Can we print like black and white instead of color ones? I don't know if...
If I have it sent to me, which was today, I don't need to print out at all. I've said that many times. I'm fine with, I'm going to be paperless here.
Right. I don't need to print out either, because you are sending me this information via email. But I think the black and white version of it, if councillors want color, that's fine, should be available, a few copies to the public as well.
Yes, sir. Mr. Quintero, can I make one final note? I just, I need to say thank you to the budget team, Jason and all his staff, who are working all the way through the weekend, not just this weekend, but last few weekends, trying to put everything together. This is the first leg of several more study sessions to make sure you have a full depiction of the budget before we get there, but I'd be remiss if I didn't at least say thank you guys for getting everything done these past few days, or past few weeks.
The staff was asked to stand up, and they didn't. Please stand up.
They're afraid they're going to get laid off if they stand up.
Come on, all at once.
First cuts is the budget team.
Unless they're too tired to stand up, but I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Jason's sitting over there on the left.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So...
We are adjourned.